I'd like to call the, uh, City Council meeting for April, um, six, six, two thousand fifteen. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Velco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moisio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Here.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation, in case of allegiance. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting, and we thank you for this hour of prayer. You said in the scripture that man ought to always pray and not to faint. I pray for our mayor, I pray for the aldermen, I pray for every department head, especially our police department. We have a difficult job. We pray for the fire department, we pray for all the citizens of Waukegan, that we'll all be one. Pray these blessings in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first item on the agenda is gonna be placed later, under Mayor's comments. Uh, the first thing I'd like to talk about is, if you notice, in front of me, there are two blue statues, one of them, one of a female, one of a male. Uh, these are the Blue Kids Lake County. This month is, um, awareness for child abuse. Uh, we've had meetings with the, the coordinators of that, uh, project, um, and their goal is on raising awareness by displaying blue kids posters. Thus, when someone sees these, they can ask what they are, and they can mention what they actually are. The second goal is providing an educational web base, which includes information on child abuse, building healthy families, and community services. Third object is engaging all members of Lake County to recognize that they can have a positive impact in a child's life. And the fourth goal of this group is to utilize social media to further the message of Blue Kids, of the Blue Kids Project. Ladies and gentlemen, too many children are being abused. We want everyone to be aware of that and take action when necessary. So, please, when you see one of these blue objects, one of these, uh, children, please notice and take special care that you help children in need, people who you feel are being abused, and get involved. It's very important to turn the blind, turn a blind's eye to child abuse. So, please, take notice. This month, we're gonna, we're gonna take special attention for that. The next, uh, the next item I have, um, this past weekend was National Day of Service, and the Youth Conservation Corps cleaned up the entire area on the Carnegie Library. Uh, I'm gonna recognize them people next week, those, those young men. Um, as we were looking into Carnegie Library, as you know, Carnegie Library is, is a mainstay in the city of Waukegan. It's a library that'll never be destroyed or damaged as long as I'm the mayor. It will not be torn down. It will be real, rebuilt if possible. There is a committee formed to look into revitalizing and revamping that facility. As I was looking into it, I noticed that there was a hundred thousand dollars in that account. And I hope that the administrator of that account takes into consideration the need to replace the windows and tuck point all the bricks. That'll, that'll give us some longevity in that building. Right now, the water's seeping in through the bricks and in through the windows, and it's causing damage on the interior, so hopefully they'll utilize that money. Um, the last several weeks, we've been using the City Hall as a place to provide tax, free tax services to people, seniors, and people who are, don't have the financial wherewithal to do their income taxes. We've been providing this space and twelve to fourteen individuals to do tax returns at no cost, um, to citizens in our community. And I'd like to recognize two people who've been instrumental in that. George Torres, our city collector, and David Motley have been here every Saturday from eight o'clock, or ten o'clock to one o'clock, as a, and they know what their time, they donate their time for this, um, project. So, I appreciate that. Something else that, that where I'd like to recognize, um, as you know, Waukegan has a very large Hispanic population, and I don't know the ins and outs of the, the community, um, so what I decided to do was form a committee. It's a Latino advisory committee to me. They advise me what I need to know in that community, because they are the ears and eyes of the Latino population in our community. I formed a committee of people I thought were leaders in the Spanish community, uh, that would help me and give me insight, problems that may occur, that I need to address, um, and I thought I, I put out some feelers for people who may be interested, and I got a lot of responses back. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce to you the Waukegan Latino Advisory Board to the mayor of the city of Waukegan. I'd like to introduce the chair. Uh, would you come up when I mention your name, please? Portfilo Garcia. Uh, Portfilo is a, uh, come up here, Portfilo, come right up here. Portfilo is a local business owner. Uh, Megan Mejia, Mono Mono Family Resource Center. Hugo Rodriguez, Most Blessed Trinity. Carmen Patlon, Patlon, Waukegan Public Library. Sister Catherine, Father Graft, Gary Graft Center. Not here either. Lefty Castellano, Waukegan Township. Justino Perez, Sangaro Corazon. Not here? Okay. These are the people that I have chosen to help me when issues arise in the Hispanic community, um, to give me insight and direction, and, uh, I thank you all for volunteering your time. And we've had several meetings and discussed some issues of importance, and hopefully, uh, we'll, we'll get a lot done with that, with that advisory board. So, thank you very much. Are you ready, David? You want, you want to come back to it, David? Okay. You know what, we're gonna do then, we're gonna proceed with the regular City Council meeting, and when the time comes to make the presentation and see the, um, the, the clip here, I've seen it. I saw it today in my office, I was very impressed with it. Um, I think you'll enjoy it, and the recipient of this, um, of this award tonight happens to be a Waukegan resident who's, um, done a lot of interesting things. I thought as a policeman, I did a lot of interesting stuff, but after looking at that film, I, I realized that I haven't done near enough. So, that being said, we'll move ahead. A motion to approve the regular minutes of March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. Oh, I'm sorry, audience time. Jane Ferry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jane Ferry, I'm thirty-one, lead executive director of Waukegan Main Street. I've just started passing out picture, picture postcards to all the council, corporation council, city clerk and treasurer as my thanks for supporting me in the position of executive director. These postcards are available for purchase from WaukeganMainStreet.org. Main Street is hosting two big events in May. The first one is a volunteer recruitment and retention workshop on May sixth. It is open to all individuals who work with and rely on volunteers. It will be at Urban Edge. See WaukeganMainStreet.org/volunteerworkshop or call the office for more information. All are welcome and all are invited. We are also proud to be hosting our thirtieth Lunch with the Mayor on May eleventh. This event brings proud and business people and concerned and interested citizens out to hear the mayor speak. For more information, please see WaukeganMainStreet.org or, as always, call the office. Once again, everyone is invited and everyone is welcome. Before I talk about events that are coming up, I do want to point out there are a couple of sure signs of spring, and one of them is the Port District is open, the Harbler is open. So, if you are excited about having the, the lake free from ice and getting neck on the water, here's your opportunity. The other big thing that shows us that spring has sprung is cleanups are starting. Uh, the mayor has mentioned they clean up around the Carnegie Library with the Carnegie Building, Ray Bradbury, um, project. They just did that on Saturday, and another cleanup that's coming up is the Antistud cleanup, which is gonna be on April twenty-fifth. If you'd like to be involved, it's called WaukeganMainStreet.org. We are always looking for volunteers. Coming up this month are two plays that are starting this Friday. An adaptation of Sir Ernian Doyle's Lost World at Three Brothers Theater, one fifteen North Genesee Street in beautiful downtown Waukegan, and more fun involvement, Boeing, Bowling, at the Shornet Theater in Boeing Park. Cloudrise Theater will also have a production that's starting on the seventeenth, the Midwest premiere of Constant State of Panic. Please support all performing arts in Waukegan. We are so lucky to have four different theaters, three of them within a block and a half. April eighteenth is gonna be very busy. It is art walk, it is also Civil War Day, with a walking tour downtown and a presentation of the Assassination of Abraham Lincoln. So, contact the Historic Society for that. Along with that, Representative Reed Mayfield will be having a conversation and coffee at the library on the same day. I've highlighted just a few things here that are going on, but as always, the Main Street calendar and the city calendar has a number of events that are going on. Please enjoy downtown Waukegan and the Main Street District. If you have any questions, please call the office at eight-four-seven-six-two-three-six-six-five-zero. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jane. Nancy, uh, twenty-three-thirty Huntington Lakes.
Hello, my name is Nancy McPherson, I'm in the twenty-three-thirty Huntington Lakes Drive, Waukegan, and I just came here to ask for your support for an item tonight. Uh, the ordinance that would increase the setback required for cellular towers. Um, I want to thank the planning and zoning commission department for proposing this, and the planning and zoning commission for, uh, supporting it, and I would like to thank you in advance for hopefully supporting me. And I think this will help all the residents of Waukegan, not to have it itself on top, are very close to their house. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item five minutes, a motion to approve the regulations of March sixteenth, two thousand fifteen. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman May. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A resolution proclamation, presentation, appointments. Item A, proclamation for a year of community development block grant program. Uh, we have that here. Is, is Azelle here? Azelle, we'll present that to you. Did you, did you want us to read it? Yes? Okay.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and center to how we meet our challenges. As where, as whereas the national's mayors are, oh, wait a minute, it's the wrong one. I'm sorry, it's the wrong one. Whereas the National Community Development Association in the United States Conference of Mayors are created National Community Development Week as a celebration to draw attention to community development issues. Whereas this is a week-long campaign to emphasize accomplishments, compliments of community development block grants, CDBG programs, showing signs of progress and success. And whereas CDBG plays a vital role in communities across the nation by helping to provide decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing, suitable living environments, expanding economic opportunities, and helping Americans achieve and maintain self-sufficiency. And whereas it is the goal of the National Community Development Association to create name recognition for the community development grant, block grant, to make CDBG a household world word by emphasizing the program's value, effectiveness, and benefits. And now, there be resolved that I, Mayor Motley, in the city of Waukegan, do hereby proclaim the week of April sixth through the eleventh, two thousand fifteen, as Community Development Week, and call upon all citizens to recognize the importance of the community development block grant. Be there resolved that a suitable, uh, embossed copy of this, of this proclamation, signed by the mayor and the city clerk, be presented to the Community Development Block Grant Department dated the sixth day of April, two thousand fifteen.
A motion to approve the proclamation by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Rivera. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes? Azelle? Next is proclamation for National Service Recognition Day. Maria?
Whereas the National Community Development Association and the United States Conference of Mayors have created National Community Development Week as a celebration to draw attention to community development issues. And whereas this is a week-long campaign to emphasize the accomplishments of community development block grant. Why is it the same thing? I don't get it.
Is it not there, Maria?
No, I don't have that one.
Okay. That one is obviously not available. Uh, Maria, the next one is the, uh, Blue Kids Lake County.
Whereas the city of Waukegan and Kids Lake County embrace the core values of cherishing children, supporting families, and building strong communities. And whereas today's society is plagued with problems which threaten, threaten the, the protection of our kid, of our children, the status of our families, and the stability of our communities. And whereas the effect of these problems are felt by whole communities, it needs to be addressed by the entire community. And whereas community responses are successful when there is partnership with these groups and schools, law enforcement agencies, child protection workers, and faith-based institutions. And whereas Blue Kids Lake County enhances life in the city of Waukegan and all of Lake County through a campaign focused on child abuse prevention through awareness, education, engagement, and participation during National Child Abuse Awareness Month. There be resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Waukegan be hereby recognize April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and proclaim the month of April to be Blue Kids Lake County Month. Be it further resolved that a suitable, embossed copy of this proclamation, signed by the mayor and the city clerk, be presented to Blue Kids Lake County dated the sixth day of April, two thousand fifteen.
I'd like to thank the council for making, recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Um, our Blue Kids signs have our website on it, BlueKidsLakeCounty.org, which provides information about child abuse, how to recognize it, as well as we have community resources and healthy parenting information. So, we really wanted to have a place where people could go, besides just seeing a blue sign, to get information all year long. And then, uh, so we really appreciate your support, and, uh, Mayor Motley, for your comments at the beginning of the meeting. Um, we really appreciate that. And we're doing this all over Lake County, and it's a, a part, a community partnership group of, uh, a number of different agencies. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And something I neglected to mention earlier, um, the collector's office will be open for full service April eighteenth and April twenty-fifth. We'll be selling city stickers, uh, you can pay water bills and other services, which is provided by the collector's office. Uh, the collector's office has made a concerted effort to make the community work better. They're opening their office. As you know, this is the last month of, to get city stickers. So, they're opening on Saturdays to provide that and to pay water bills, which is a, a real plus. And there, there again, that's George Torres who's, who's doing that. So, again, George, thank you very much for your service. Judiciary Committee, Alderman Rivera, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the judiciary committee, uh, came to order at approximately five-oh-three, uh, this evening. Uh, item A, adopt an ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat, plan of the Bluestone Retail Plan Development Zoning Calendar number twenty-four forty-seven, or forty-seven. Petitioner, Bluestone, single tenant properties, north, uh, slash, North State Bank, located at thirty-two thirty-three West Grand Avenue. Now, uh, I've got, uh, you know, some of the aldermen who wanna have a quick briefing, that haven't, uh, seen the project. This is, uh, of course, the North State and, uh, site over there on the corner of Green Bay Road and Grand Avenue, and I know there was an issue in regards to the, uh, the two-hundred-year-old oak tree, which is, believe it, it's not coming down. Uh, it's, uh, staying up, uh, but I do have Steve Clay's, the, uh, these are, he's representing Bluestone, uh, who is the, uh, principal purchaser of the property. Steve, uh, could you come up real quick and, uh, just give a, a quick briefing, so the rest of the aldermen will know what's, uh, what's coming? And I know, uh, it's an Alderman Moisio's ward. I know, uh, Alderman, uh, Moisio, uh, supported this, uh, this type of development. Sure, go ahead, that's fine. Supported this development, which is, uh, uh, it's gonna be a wonderful development, because this, this corner, this property, uh, just, it's been underused, really. So, what they're gonna do is, uh, uh, they're basically gonna rehab, uh, put a new bank, basically, and, and other, uh, uh, possible businesses in, in that corner. But, uh, but it's a wonderful, uh, wonderful project. It's, as Alderman Moisio was saying earlier, this is something that, you know, we, like you, like Alderman Moisio was saying, we can't be just fining people to death. You know, that's not the way to raise, uh, revenue. So, we support development like this, but, uh, go ahead, Steve. Could you give a, a quick, uh, brief, uh, briefing on this project?
Sure. Uh, my name is Rick Clay's.
Brick, excuse me.
Yeah, sorry, Rick. Uh, with Bluestone Single Tenant Properties. Uh, I'm sorry, the pages in the pamphlet are not numbered, but if you turn to the fifth page in the, uh, packet, uh, it gives you a pretty good overview of the proposed site plan, uh, for the project. And what you see, um, you know, what exists on that property today is a two-story North State's, uh, bank building, and the building is substantially underutilized by North States. So, what they desire to do is build a brand-new, uh, branch bank facility on the south end of the property, so you can see that located on the far left of the drawing. And that's a new, um, bank facility that will be self-developed by North States. Uh, that includes three drive-up windows, and it's about a, um, twenty-four-hundred-square-foot, uh, new bank building. And so, once that gets, uh, developed for them, then we're gonna demolish the, uh, existing building, and we propose, uh, kind of a three-lot, uh, planned unit development. On the corner, we have a, a convenience store with gas planned, and then the other two lots, uh, one of which is shown as a, a car wash, and one of which is so, uh, shown as a multi-unit strip center. Uh, all we're asking for the council to approve this evening is the final plan for the convenience store with gas and the final plan for the branch bank facility. The other two, uh, lots, we don't have specific uses, so we would come back to the Planning and Zoning, uh, Commission and, uh, Village Board, uh, once we identify users for that. Um, I know that, um, the, uh, old oak tree, uh, that's located just off the corner of the intersection has, uh, obtained a lot of notoriety in the, in the press over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we worked with staff, uh, at the recommendation of both staff and the city, and we were able to, uh, reconfigure how our sidewalk was being installed along Green Bay Road and Grand, and were able to develop around the tree, and, uh, the tree stays in place. Unfortunately, we would've told, uh, the newspaper that had they reached us, uh, prior to the article, but, uh, it was not something that we really objected to. We just had to re, uh, kinda rejigger the site plan a little bit to accommodate the, the maintenance of that tree. Uh, if you turn a few more pages back, you can see, um, there's a colored rendering in the brochure of a Thornton's store. Um, I told the judiciary committee earlier this evening that we're very close to signing a lease with, uh, Thornton's on that property. They would, uh, add, that would be their second unit in town. They would maintain the, uh, existing store they have up at Sunset and Green Bay Road. Um, but this would be a net new facility for them. Again, we don't have a signed lease for them, but, uh, we anticipate, uh, having one here in the next couple of weeks. And that's a rendering of their new prototype, and we worked with, uh, Steve from the village sta, or from the city staff to make a number of, uh, enhancements to the architecture of the building, and, which includes, uh, the stone, um, foundation of the building. We added a window on the Green Bay roadside, because it's, uh, got a lot of visibility to the intersection and a variety of other enhancements. So, I'm happy to answer any specific questions. I, I suppose, uh, last but not least is the economic impact of this, uh, development. And we sent a, um, a fiscal and economic impact study over to, uh, Russ earlier this afternoon that indicated that our projected estimate, uh, of incremental revenue for the city of Waukegan will be about four-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars a year, just from the retail sales tax generated from the convenience store and gas, and with the real estate sales tax, the incremental tax that's generated from the convenience store and the bank. So, very, uh, significant impact to the, to the city. Sir, did you have a question?
Yeah, the tree, you're gonna set up a tree protection zone around, because from what I understand, oak tree, uh, surface roots are sensitive to trampling by vehicles and things like that.
You're right.
Probably be a fairly sized, a good-sized area.
Yeah, so what, we will detail that on the civil engineering plans that our general contractor has when he executes that development. What I would tell you, what should give the, the city some assurance on that, is, uh, the existing curb line for the outside drive-up lane for Nor, North State's bank is much closer to the tree than our final curb line that you'll see along our western edge. So, we're actually gonna add, I think, at least twelve to fifteen feet of green area that's not there now, to the, call it, the east side of the, the tree.
What I'm saying is, you're gonna be removing the asphalt, right?
Yeah, so that'll have to be done.
Vehicles will be driving, you gotta keep 'em away from that tree.
Right.
Damages the surface roots.
That'll have to be done with care, and we'll make sure that our, uh, civil engineering plans detail that for the contractor.
The alderman's absolutely correct. You drive those big, ready, heavy trucks close to that oak tree, compacts the soil, and they'll die later on. I used to work on constructions, putting foundations in. We have to be very careful. The corn with the big trucks, when you get close to that tree, you gotta stay back away. Otherwise, it'll compact that soil, and that tree will die in two, three years. Please, please take note.
We'll make care for that. Okay.
All of the Moisio?
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate the, right now, that property generates about fifty thousand dollars in property tax. That's it. He just, the gentleman just told it, couldn't be upwards of four-hundred thousand with sales tax and property tax. That's a huge improvement. A service to the community and a huge revenue stream. That, those are things we need to keep in mind when we talk about new revenue streams, new ways to make money, uh, for the city and provide a service. That's it. Forty-nine thousand dollars, up to almost half a million dollars, oh, improvements of sales tax dollars and property tax dollars. Uh, that's what happens when you have development, um, those things improve. That's very important to realize. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brick. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
So, again, uh, item A on the agenda, uh, the, to adopt an ordinance approving the, uh, the preliminary and final plan of the Bluestone Rental Plan Development Zoning Calendar twenty-four forty-seven. Petitioner, Bluestone Single Tenant Properties slash North States, located at thirty-two thirty-three West Grand Avenue, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Velco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Velco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling. Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B is on the same project, which is to adopt an ordinance approving the conditional use permit for a bank slash financial institution. Zoning calendar number twenty-four forty-eight. Petitioner, Bluestone. Petitioner, Bluestone, Single-Tenant Properties slash North State's Bank, located at 3233 West Grand Avenue, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item C, adopt an ordinance, same thing for the same area there, is adopt an ordinance approving the conditional use permit for an automobile service station. Zoning calendar number 2449. Petitioner, Bluestone Single-Tennant Properties, Nor- slash, North State Bank, located at 3233 West Grand Avenue, an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
And before I move on next, I'd like to commend the, the, our staff, especially Steve Sabrin, for doing the, the work on this. Good job. So, item D, adopt an ordinance approving the tax amendment to Section 4-15-2. General provisions increasing the setback requirement of cellular towers from residents. Zoning calendar number 2453. Right now, our ordinance states the setback at 100 feet, and we're setting it back to 500 feet. This is to, for all the residents in the city of Waukegan where a possible cellular tower would be placed. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Are there any unintended consequences to this? Just curious.
No.
I'm going to pass on it.
It's to everyone's benefit. It sets a standard for future development of the towers.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item E, adopt an ordinance approving the tax amendment to Section 3-13. Fees regarding application fees for dispensaries and cultivation centers. Zoning calendar number 2454. And an ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
No.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item F, approve a lease agreement for 13 North Genesee Street between the city of Waukegan and the Greater Waukegan Development Coalition. An ISO move. And this has to do with, they're leasing the, the police station, and they're going to be moving in there, and, an ISO move.
What it is, it's an incubator where we can, we can build and develop new businesses. It's a, it's a three-year agreement. I think it's going to be very beneficial to the city of Waukegan and the downtown in particular. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item F, oh, excuse me, item G. Approve a lease agreement for the 13 North.
He didn't do.
No, excuse me.
G.
G, item G. Approve a memorandum, sorry, I got my glasses off. Approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Waukegan and GWDC, an ISO move.
What that is, is they're moving from 131 North Genesee to 13 North Genesee. This agreement binds them to bring a restaurant at 131 North Genesee. They have two years to put a new restaurant in there. There, there again, it's extremely beneficial to the downtown area, redeveloping that area to a restaurant. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
The building at 130, don't you walk up a ramp when you go in the door? It's kind of elevated? And furthermore, it seems to mandate someone to open up a restaurant when there may or may not be a market for it? I don't see the wisdom in that. Why can't we just let them have 13 North and forget about the other thing? Because if they don't do it, I, how many restaurants have opened up and failed downtown as it is?
We have a.
Jerry's Tacos, went to Picasso's, is going to something else.
We, what we did was, we, it was, this, this was part and parcel tied together. In order to get what they required from us, we asked them to do something to benefit the city of Waukegan. The agreement was drafted by Ann Lynn. They're happy with it, we're happy with it. There are certain criteria placed in there that benefits both parties. If you'd like to explain, this is, this is our attorney.
Thank you very much. By the record, my name is Steve Patterson. I'm the attorney for Greater Waukegan Development Coalition. I think we understand your concerns. It's important, I think, to understand that GWDC's goal here is to bring as much energy and vitality as possible to the downtown area. So the creation of the, of the business technology hub and incubator is, is grounded in that idea of trying to bring in new businesses, trying to bring in entrepreneurial efforts that can kind of work together in a social enterprise to improve their, their chances of succeeding and their business goals. In that same vein, we think that the incorporation of a new restaurant into 130 North Genesee is, is a good idea as well. Certainly, this is an agreement that we worked at very hard with city staff, both the legal department and the administration, and we feel that it, it is a, a project that can be very successful in the future.
But you're, you're setting up a tech hub of restaurants, of, I don't, I don't get the connection, and downtown is a tough sell. I don't know why we make people potentially waste money for something that's not going to make it. I don't know. Why can't we just do a clean deal with them and let them have 13 North? If they feel like they can open a restaurant, by all means, do it. But I, I don't see, see the wisdom in holding them to an agreement that they have to open a restaurant. I mean, can we amend that possibly?
Roy, unless I'm wrong.
I appreciate what they're trying to do.
Unless I'm wrong, Roy, wasn't this your idea with the restaurant? Yes?
Uh, yes.
That's why we did it, Alderman. It was his suggestion.
I stand corrected. I'm, that's it. I'm done.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Roll call, continue, please.
Alder, um, no, we never started. We never started the.
Go ahead.
Item G, yeah.
No.
He was, he was in voting, wasn't he?
We were in voting.
Yeah.
Then Alderman Newsom.
Okay, Newsom?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay? Yep? All right, item H. Approve a lease for 227 North Genesee Street between the city of Waukegan and the Illinois Department of Healthcare and Family Services. An ISO move.
This is just a continuing agreement. They've had agreement with us for, for the past five years.
Extended, yeah.
This is a one-year agreement. Roll call, Alderman, motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
I'm going to hold off a bit on the Labor Relations Committee. Lori Nierheim, would you please come, would you go to that mic, please, Lori? Lori is going to make a presentation. Unfortunately, we, we had a, a clip we're going to show that shows what this gentleman has, has done, and how ambitious he is. And unfortunately, it's not available, but we will post it on our website. Lori, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, my name is Lori Nierheim, and is Chair of the Waukegan Arts Council. It is my great honor and privilege this evening to present the inaugural Kate Corey Award to an outstanding artist in our community. And first, I want to tell you about Kate Corey, and why the award is named after her. Kate Corey was born in Waukegan, Illinois, in 1861. And she was the daughter of a prominent newspaper editor and an outspoken abolitionist who was involved with the Underground Railroad. And he has an interesting story. They lived on Utica Street here, and I understand that years later, they found a double wall and a secret room in the basement of that home. And it was his free servants that helped to transport the runaway slaves to the Waukegan harbor where there were ships waiting. He, during the Civil War, ran the Waukegan Gazette, and he often, single-handedly, was the writer, the editor, the printer, and the distributor of the news. Kate lived in Waukegan until the age of 19. And at that time, her family moved out east to Newark, New Jersey. And her father was involved with business interests with Wall Street. And it was in New York that she then studied, she studied art. And she went to Cooper Union, where she was excelled at painting and photography. And she also studied at the Arts, the Arts Student League of New York. And in 1905, there was a turning point in her life. She met another artist named Louis Aiken, and Louis had just come from Arizona, where he painted the landscapes of the desert and the Grand Canyon, and he painted paintings of the Hopi Indian. And he tried to convince Kate to come to Arizona, to live on the mesas of the Hopi, and to be part of that community. And he wanted to start an artist colony, and she was the only one he recruited. So there she lived on, in this ancient village, and she documented the life of the Hopi people. And she was one of the few white people that were allowed to live in that village. And she took over 500 photographs of their, their life, their culture, their homes, their, their ceremonial customs. It was really quite remarkable. And she was one of the last people to photograph the Hopi on their reservation. In 1912, she moved to Prescott, Arizona. And in 1913, she was invited to participate in the famed New York Armory Show, which was a big deal. And one of her paintings was exhibited and sold at that Armory Show. It was, it was quite an accomplishment. And she's considered today one of the West's most famous artists. And she was very versatile. She worked in watercolor, and oils, and charcoal, and pencil. She did sketches, portraits, landscapes. She designed books. She designed wallpaper. She was involved in designing camouflage for airplanes. She was involved in museum design, in costumes. Very prolific woman, and just a remarkable artist who hailed from Waukegan. So that's a little bit about Kate Corey, and we want to make the connection to her cultural curiosity and her artistic talents. One thing I just want to mention, too, her paintings are in the Smithsonian Institution. They're also in the Smokey Museum, the Charlotte Hall Museum in Prescott, and the Waukegan Historical Society has several of her pieces, as well as, as her correspondence and other documents in their archives. So the Kate Corey Award, our goal is to recognize a Waukegan artist or resident who exemplifies the same type of cultural curiosity and talent as Kate. She immersed herself in the Hopi culture to tell stories that they, so that they could endure. So, tonight, we are pleased and honored to present this award to David Dallason, who is here with us tonight. And we're going to post the wonderful video that you didn't get a chance to see. But David is a world traveler and a very talented artist. He's traveled all over and paints incredible cultures and people and the landscape. And, and I think it's just a perfect tie-in to Kate's cultural curiosity and artistic creativity. So without further ado, please give a warm welcome to David Dallason.
Hey, thank you so much, Lori. It's an honor to be here and, and honored to get this award. My heart lies exactly where Kate's heart lied, lewd, whatever that would be, lay. You know, there's so many people within our country that we know about that are underprivileged, but there's so many people without that are underprivileged. So I've really sort of dedicated my life to painting about that, the worlds that are just beyond our borders. And of course, Waukegan, we're so empathetic to people who are underprivileged, and that's why I live here largely, because I, I, I relate to that existence. So, her work is about expressing for the Hopi, et cetera. And what I end up doing, and maybe the easel is, is what actually enables this, you know, last year, I was two and a half months in Vietnam, and I drop into little villages with my easel, and I stand and paint. And because it's a very unthreatening thing, people seem to open their hearts, and they just embrace you. And so, within no time, I'm really a part of their life. And I'll stay around for a week in one place and just sort of feel like a local. So I understand what her paintings are about and what she was trying to say, and that's very much what I'm trying to say. So I'm, I'm very flattered by this award because it's perfectly tied to what I'm about. So, I hope you guys do get a, a chance to watch the video. It's a five-minute short clip, and it's quite interesting. So if you can, please click on that link, I would appreciate it. Anyway, happy to be a citizen of this town and happy to get this award.
On behalf of the Waukegan Arts Council and the city of Waukegan, we want to take a moment to recognize the leadership of Jane Waller. She's surprised she doesn't know this is happening. And without her leadership and her passion and her inspiration in creating the Arts Council, we would not be where we are today without her effort. Mayor, quick photo? No doubt, Waukegan has a rich arts legacy, and it goes beyond Ray Bradbury and Jack Benny. We want to draw upon our artistic connections to the arts and to promote these things in Waukegan, that Waukegan is an arts destination, as well as a city that supports the arts. Another example of our partnership with the city of Waukegan is the upcoming Artwise Community Cultural Arts Series. And we're going to be launching this that, this fall, and this is a poster that's being passed around. Our plan is for Artwise to be an annual event that reflects a theme of broad community interest. And it's, in 2015, the theme will be "Those Who Serve." And it's meant to honor the sacrifice of the young men and women who serve our country. It, it will open on September 11th and run through Veterans Day, and it will feature the photographs of Ryan Spencer Reed. And Ryan is an American photographer who documents a number of social issues, but he was embedded with 101st Airborne, the modern-day Band of Brothers, in Afghanistan. And he tells a story about what it means to serve our country, and it's really wonderful stuff. We're going to be bringing his work to Urban Edge. We'll, we'll be here for the entire two months. And during that time, we're going to also be augmenting that story with a writer series at the Waukegan Public Library, a film series at the Genesee Theater. There will be theatrical performances at our local theaters. We will have events at the naval base. And we're also bringing our local veterans' art from the VA here to Waukegan. So the goal really for the series is to engage our citizens, bring people to our great city, and raise the profile of Waukegan. So we'll So we'll be sharing more about that, but just wanted to let you know that's coming, and that's another example of our great partnership with the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is... Next item is Labor Relations. That's me. On April 1st, 2015, the Labor Relations Committee met. The topic of discussion was to approve the collective bargaining agreement made between Local 73, the Service Employees International Union, AFL-CIO, and the City of Waukegan to be effective on May 1st, 2015, and be terminated on April 30th, 2019. That vote was unanimous by the Labor Relations Committee to approve this contract. I sent all of you a copy of the contract. I sent all of you everything that was signed off and tenderly agreed to. I think it's a very good contract. They were happy. They voted 27 to 3 to accept the contract. They ratified it last Thursday. I'm presenting it to you. Are there any questions or concerns with what I presented to you to view?
I'm concerned about government wages ever increasing, and the private sector is going nowhere. I think at some point, we have to reflect that.
I don't disagree, Alderman. This calls for 2% pay raise across the board. All the language was addressed. They're satisfied with it. Our attorney and myself and our finance director are satisfied with this contract. Labor Relations was satisfied with this contract as presented. Therefore, I make the motion, seconded by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman.
Excuse me. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Tempest and Alderman Moizio have to recuse yourself on this vote. Other than that, the second will be by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Excuse.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
I'm going to vote aye, but I will put this for the record. Your Honor, I didn't see anything in here about adjusting some of these contracts where our citizens, our employees should start living in our city.
Nor will you.
Well, see, that's the wrong attitude.
Sir, it's not the wrong attitude. It's state law.
I don't care what it is. This is Waukegan. Those are excuses that have been given to this city for the last 10 to 15 years. They need to live here. The budget that we have is leaving this city. That's dollars in the City of Waukegan. That frustrates me, Your Honor. That's just plain and simple for saying. Everybody up here have to live in their wards. They got to stay here regardless. These folks need to understand, this is the money leaving this community. Harold Beal just said, "Look at these salaries. These are good, livable salaries. This is a great city to live in." So I... State nothing. We're home rule. Find a way to get it done. That's just bottom line with me. This is a great city to live in. People got to understand that. They need to know that. There's nothing wrong with Waukegan. They get these big old budgets, they stay here for five or six years, and they go to these other places and live off the backs of the City of Waukegan. Everybody should be passionate about this. I'm tired of it, and I'm tired of the excuse I'm talking about. It's the state. It's the federal. It's Waukegan. My vote is aye.
Alderman, I don't disagree with your sentiment. I was a union president for 12 years. I know how this works. Unfortunately, in all these contracts, that is a point in negotiations that the state mandates. The only city that I know in the state of Illinois that doesn't have residency is the City of Chicago.
Well, we should act like the City of Chicago. That's just, Your Honor, I am so tired of folks telling me and telling us that we're not good enough to live in, but you're good enough to get that paycheck every first and fifteenth of the month. 2%. These are good salaries. These are great, this is a great salary for people to live into our community. We cannot afford, we do not generate the money that the city produces in giving away salaries. It just doesn't happen. We don't have a product to sell. If we had a product to sell, it would be different. We have to start thinking, acting, wishing that you would live in this city and be successful. No need to belabor it no more. Thank you, Your Honor. I know you tried, but that needs to be said.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Recuse myself.
Alderman Beadley.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Okay, the next item is Finance Committee. Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee met this evening, and the first thing I would like to do is take item, I would like to make a motion to take Item A and Item C off the Finance Committee agenda, put them at the end of New Business, Item I, and Item J, because one of those we did not discuss today, and they both coincide with each other. I'd like to make that motion, sir.
So move. A motion by Alderman Valco to move Item A and Item C from the Finance Committee and put them under New Business. Second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B, a motion approving the ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed $7,500,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2015A of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois, and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal in interest on said bonds. The Finance Committee so moves, and so do, I'm sorry, and I so move. That correction, that's $7,500,000. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Next item is Public Works Committee. Alderman Cunningham, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item A, authorize for the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the 2015 Underground Program, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, I'm sorry, voice vote. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Item B, authorization for the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the 2015 curb and sidewalk program, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You. Item C, authorization for the proper city officials to draft specifications and advertise for bids for the 2015 Road Program, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Moizio, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Next item is Item A, City Waukegan Tax Year 2014 Equalized Assess值valuation, $941,401,330. Any questions on this?
Is it up or down from last year?
Tina, is it up or down from last year? Is Tina?
Up.
Down? Motion to accept as presented by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New Business, Item A, approval of payroll dated April 3rd, 2015, and the million of MAP retro pay, $98,884.36. Comp time payout, $356.73. Final payout, $47,559.2. Local 150 chute tool allowance, $23,430. Actual check dated 3/27. IAAF clothing allowance, $43,775. Actual check date, 3/27. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated April 6th, 2015, the amount of $1443,177.50. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New Business, Item A, approval of payroll dated April 3rd, 2015, and the million of MAP retro pay, $98,884.36. Comp time payout, $356.73. Final payout, $47,559.2. Local 150 chute tool allowance, $23,430. Actual check dated 3/27. IAFF clothing allowance, $43,775. Actual check date, 3/27. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated April 6th, 2015, the amount of $1443,177.50. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Item B, approval of block party requests, motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman May. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item E, approval of raffle sale application for the community Christian Church Youth Group. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Conken. All's in favor?
Aye.
Item F, approval of raffle sale application for the American Cancer Society Relief for Life, Greater Waukegan, Far North Shore. Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Moizio. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item F, approval of use of Steiner Provagen for the Gasville on the Beach Event, sponsored by Fist, an outdoor special event on June 27th from noon to 8:00 PM. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Tempest. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, approval of second quarter invoice for commuary maintenance charges at Fountain Square of Waukegan in accordance with the annual budget approval by the City Council March 16th, 2015, in the amount of $23,678. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item G, approval of second quarter invoice for commuary maintenance charges at Fountain Square of Waukegan in accordance with the annual budget approval by the City Council March 16th, 2015, in the amount of $23,678. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. All's in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Voice vote.
That's a roll call.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Next item is Item I, College District Number 532 CLC, the properly commonly known as 111, West Madison Street, Waukegan, Illinois 6085, PIN number 0821419012, and the properly commonly known as 30 North Sheridan Road, Waukegan, Illinois 6085, PIN number 021419016, and 0821419033, for the sum of $1.3 million. What this is, is we have decided to sell the parking garage behind the College of Lake County to the College of Lake County for the amount of $1.3 million. And there's a side lot that's attached directly north of the garage that we're also selling as part and parcel of that agreement. Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Conken. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
And the bonds?
Do we not have bonds? Will they take care of our bonds?
This will pay $1.3 million off the debt of the bond debt.
So the money we're getting from the...
It goes right back to the enterprise fund for the bond debt on that.
Okay, I just...
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
David Geese, would you please stand up? David, David is with CLC, and I have to tell you, for two years, we negotiated the sale of this property, and David was a true gentleman, as was Jerry Weber. And David, please thank Jerry on my behalf, and thank your board for accepting this sale. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank all of you, and I bring you to the state of the business for the next nine years. Does anyone have a schedule?
Good.
I don't know.
Thank you, David. Item J, motion approving an ordinance providing for payment of defecence of certain outstanding parking fees and sales tax revenue refunding bonds, Series 2014A of the City of Waukegan, Lake County, Illinois. This allows us to pay down the debt service on the garage. We just sold the garage. This allows us to pay into that account. Motion by Alderman Beadley, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to move into Alderman's time, and I don't want to hurry anyone, but just I want to remind you that Wisconsin plays Duke in about 10 minutes.
Alderman Tempest.
I'll be a gentleman in the past.
Alderman May.
One thing. I just want to bid a fond farewell to Waukegan Main Street's Executive Director, Jane Ferry, tonight, I'm assuming was probably her last night with us here at City Council, as she moves on to new things in her future. And for those who are interested, Waukegan Main Street is looking for a new executive director. You can go to their website for more details. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Pass.
Alderman Cunningham.
Pass.
Alderman Conken.
I'd like one thing to mention, too. Please remember tomorrow is election day, if I'm not mistaken. And we all saw what happened with the schools, with the teachers and the school boards, the animosity there. Some very important votes tomorrow.
So please remember, go out and vote for your school board, your park board, and I believe there's a couple Alderman's races up here, so make sure you get out and vote. Thank you.
Alderman Moizio.
I'm not to spoil the party, and that's a perfect segue. I'm going to read this real quick. I'll be quick. There was a hearing about charter schools, and I had planned to talk there, but the evening got late, and I had to tend to other business, so I'll read what I was going to read there. Says, "I do believe in educational choices, but these choices must be within the public system itself or private options that the parents pay for themselves. We can go back and forth regarding charter schools, test scores, and student achievement, but those are just diversionary tactics to mask the true motive. Let's look at the devil in the details. The problem with charter schools, they are just an investment avenue, just a way for private investors to use house money to invest, and that house money would be taxpayer money, just a way to take advantage of tax laws and pretend as if they are helping underprivileged communities find a way to improve a small section of its students. A simple Google search about charter schools and investments turns up the true impetus behind charter schools, investment monies. Want an ingenious public fleecing of taxpayers' money. Try and sell underperforming, poor school districts, the idea of letting someone else try and improve performance, and when that sell job doesn't go well, go to their dysfunctional big brother, the state, and ask for their bite at the apple. As with most political boondoggles, all one has to do is follow the money. Any taxpayer, any taxpayer in Waukegan that supports this boondoggle is just part and parcel to the fleecing of the monies. The state's responsibility should be to do what is best for the most, the whole system, the greater good, not give a few people opportunities that are just a facade for people to double their hedge fund investment in seven years. The answer, just like in high-quality, high-performing school districts, is to have creative leadership at all levels, from school board to classroom. Allow creative choices within the monetary structure of the district that give all students the opportunity to become productive people in society. And if that is not enough choice for the community, then let parents choose to pay for another choice for their children. But don't continue to sell this shell game of choice and improvement under the fleecing of taxpayers' money." Thank you.
Alderman Beadley.
I was going to pass, but I'll respond to that. Quality and choice in our schools is nonexistent. You know what? If they're not going to start flunking these kids and throwing out the bad kids, we're not going anywhere in this community. Let's face the facts here. I think five to six schools are on the state watch list. I thought two years ago Superintendent Batista said the school district was improving. I don't think so. We've got 2,000 vacant homes in this community, and there's a valid reason for that. No young family wants to come into this town and expose their young kids to this school district. They need to flunk these kids. If you're not doing the work at home, flunk them. Get the parents' attention. If you can't behave yourself, throw them out. I don't care. Life is too short to keep nipping at the edges for these societal problems that we keep throwing more money at, more programs. Test scores aren't going up. Let's simplify life. Give these kids at least a basic education. Quit pushing them into college, taking out tens of thousands of dollars in loans. There was a very sad story in the Tribune, well, not sad, just kind of foolish, a woman that went to get a paralegal degree, that she was able to borrow almost $130,000 in government loans for a paralegal. Further on in the article, a gentleman that in charge of a community college was perplexed by this, because he said, basically, you need an associate's degree to be a paralegal, and she could have come to his community college and gotten an associate's degree for $7,000. This is what happens when government wants to solve everybody's problems for them. We need to go back like it used to be. Families take care of their own family. Let's stop wasting our money. Voters wake up. What have we done in the state of Illinois here? We're broke. We're dictated by foolish laws and rules, regulations, pensions, everything else. What did the wise voters in this state do? They gave the Democrats super majorities in both houses. Take a look at yourselves when you get home. Start paying attention. Your municipality is going broke here, and it's not going to be long. If you make the wrong choice in the state, and I'll say it out loud, Rita Mayfield and Terry Link, I wonder what they do for this community. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Pass.
Okay, now let's all go home and watch Wisconsin beat Duke.
I was going to pass, but I'm going to say something.
Motion adjourned by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Valco. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.